I'd like to call the Waitley School Committee, January 8, 2025, to order. It's 6:02. And the first thing on our agenda is to review and approve the minutes from November 12.
I move to approve the minutes from November 12.
Okay. I'll second. Okay. Henry, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Financial statement, please.
All right. So I did email you the expense reports. We do have some budget line overages, things that we've talked about in the past. We're still in good shape for the year and there's no major concerns right now. And 29 warrants were reviewed and signed electronically totaling $151,295.2. And on the school choice report, just a reminder that we do have a student who is school choiced into the district that does have some special needs. So those are being paid from school choice and will receive that reimbursement back. Almost dollar for dollar. So those accounts that are over there, that'll write itself by the end of the year. On the general fund, there's nothing major really to go over, but if you have questions, I am certainly happy to take them.
Are you there anything?
No.
Henry, you have anything for the... Okay. Thank you. Principal's report, please.
I think I'm probably stealing you some information I was gonna come later, but I wanted to thank Yenke for their donation to Waitley Elementary School. Always appreciative of their support. Monty's March, November 18th, Monty Delmonte came to Waitley for an assembly about food insecurity. This year was the 15th Annual Monty's March, not here, but this March. Monty's a radio personality who begins a 43-mile journey on foot from Springfield to Greenfield to raise awareness and funding to address food insecurity in the valley. For several years now, Mrs. Appenell and our fourth grade students have followed his inspiration by planning our own Monty's March. On November 26th, the Waitley Police Department once again partnered with us to allow us to fill the cruiser with all the donated items. I think that's maybe the kids' favorite part, is loading stuff into the containers. This year, we filled it to the brim. And then on November 27th, the entire school marched to commemorate the school, which if you stick with the perimeter and do it twice, it's a mile.
Wow.
Holding signs and chanting about food insecurity. I'd like to thank Mrs. Appenell, the fourth grader, for all their hard work. And I'd also like to thank all the families who support this and our other service learning initiatives that our students engage in. And on the summer night, we held our Waitley Winter Concert. We retreated to performances by students in every grade under the instruction of Ms. Gibson, our general music teacher. Our strings and band students also put on an awesome performance. This is the first year since COVID that it feels like we're back to full strength with our strings and band program. So it was wonderful to see.
Awesome.
Yeah. For the last few years, we lost quite a few kids because during COVID, people return instruments because you're not going to keep renting an instrument. And then kids never got back to it. So those first couple of years.
A little slim.
It was a little squeaky and there were not a whole lot of chairs on the stage. But it was nice to see we had a hard time getting everyone up there. So that was great. We have really a great music program.
Yeah, it always sounded good, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Any ideas what we're gonna, what you guys are gonna do with the $4,000 from Yenke Campbell? Any ideas yet?
Not sure yet.
Okay.
You guys could accept that donation now while we're talking about it, if you want to, rather than come back.
Okay. I make, I'll make a motion to accept the $4,000 donation from Yenke Campbell.
Okay.
All in favor? Henry?
Yep, sorry, my mic froze, yep.
With that knife in your hand.
Very adamant about that.
That was perfect.
I don't see any public on tonight. No? Anybody now?
No.
Okay. I guess we're gonna talk about budget.
Yes.
FY26 budget.
Are you going to the 6:15?
So I'm gonna, Henry, as I mentioned earlier, you were in the room, but I have to leave at 6:15 just to do, to run over to a meeting virtually to, in Deerfield. So I'm just gonna do my quick, I'm gonna jump ahead to do my quick thing, which is the DSE. We are doing a DSE review, district review. I did send out the FAQ, which I thought does a good job of answering the questions. But DSE basically picks about a dozen districts in the state, which is a very small amount. The fact that we were chosen is an honor. Not really. It's a lot of work for us. And DSE uses a third-party contractor to come and actually do the audit. It'll be the first week in March. And when, as that date approaches, they will be asking for school committee members. Obviously, there's 24 of you, so not gonna meet with everybody, but a few of you. And so I'll set up the schedule and then you guys can plug in. But I don't know what days yet, just I noticed that first week of March. But meanwhile, they're looking at everything from, you know, Shelley to prepare, you know, all our budgets from all of our, all five of our districts for the last three years, plus all budget presentations, plus... So they're looking at everything. And for us, the, the amount of the multiple, five times this, five times that, five times that. Plus all of our, you know, curriculums, all of our professional development plans, what we did, you know, our ILT meeting agendas, you know, everything. They're looking at everything that we do. So it's a lot of work pulling all that together. And last year Pioneer did it, I looked at their report. And it probably, you know, it's one of those things, it's an audit. I probably, you can probably tell us where, probably tell you the majority of things they're gonna find even before they do it. But this is, it was not something we could opt out of. Okay. So that's what's coming. If you have more questions, I'll read the back. FAQ, I hand it out and it kind of surprises me.
Thank you.
Do you have anything in superintendent's report you wanna touch on first?
Yeah. The only thing I'm gonna add is, so, you know, we're in fact, we're doing that kind of stuff. I do wanna add, I did just send out a rather alarming email that we did have a data breach. So this is not on the agenda, normally it would be on the agenda, this kind of thing. But it was literally today I found out about it. They sent emails yesterday, which started us investigating, are we one of those schools? It's from Power School, so you check the email to see that. They apparently were able to, they're not saying they paid ransomware, so I don't wanna miss say that, but somehow they were able to get the person who took the information to destroy it. So, so we are monitoring with everybody else who uses it, it's a nationwide system, to see if that's true of people's data that's out there. We do not store financial data such as social security, so employees are listening, social security or other financial information. However, names, addresses, and phone numbers were pulled. Now, there's no information that, that information that was pulled was then sent out. But, you know, we're relying on a company who, I mean, they're, they're doing PR as well. So we're gonna keep an eye on things and kind of work with our other schools to make sure that the information didn't go anywhere. Again, they didn't go into our servers, they went into the tech help desk of their servers or something of that sort. So...
Should we be worried about the Power School emails that we get?
No, so those are originated from us sending them to you. It really is about, you know, the concern is that, you know, people are sensitive to information. A lot of our information in life is out there, but nobody likes that to be out there. There is, you know, things that could be considered sensitive, you know? A student's, you know, student's age and like basically their classroom assignment is in there. Like, you know, so like, some of that stuff you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't go and share with everybody. It isn't, for as we know, isn't out there in the world. It was taken out and then destroyed, right? So it wasn't distributed on the internet as far as we know at this time. And so, you know, we are obligated to share that too as soon as we find out that changes and so are they. So that's kind of where it's standing. Again, that's hot off the press. I just finished writing the letter about two hours ago, or even less. So I'm sure if people have a lot of questions, I might have to do a clarifying email in the next few days if there are more information that's up on board. It feels right now it's buttoned up, but I'm just telling you, I'm not, be worried. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep an eye on it. And Scott Paul is keeping an eye on it, our tech director.
So you sent that out, email to the entire community?
Yes, you got both, a school committee email and then you also got one from the entire community and such. So, thanks. So you can check the email in the last two hours. Right?
So if you wanna go?
So I'm gonna just be in the other room.
Okay. And Shelley's gonna talk about the, our wonderful FY26 budget?
I am gonna talk about our budget. Wonderful. All right, Chrissy?
I need to go with Darius.
It's fine, I can take the brunt of this for right now. So this is just informational tonight. Obviously, we can share thoughts and ideas, but we're not making any decisions. So I'm presenting to you what has been discussed with administration. So Chrissy, Darius, and I, and then Chrissy solicits feedback from, you know, whoever she needs to within the building to present principals' requests. You'll, you'll hear that they're very minor in quantity, but not necessarily dollar value. And we will have some decisions to make moving forward in the February meeting. So what we're looking at right now for level services is an 11.07% increase over FY25. Some of this should not be new information. Most of it should not be new information because we talked about this when we made some budget decisions last year. So we used $40,000 of our remaining ESAR funds to offset FY25. Those are no longer available. So we're automatically starting off the budget season with really a 2% increase over the prior year just because of that. We also used $40,000 of our rural aid from last year to offset this year's budget. So that's another 2%. So just the grant adjustment alone is almost four of the 11%.
We expect to get that aid, again, the 40,000.
So... Yeah, Beth's question was similar to mine.
Yeah, so we do have a rural aid allocation. We won't have any more ESAR money, but there is rural aid. So I will talk about that as one of our options to reduce. What I always do when we start the budget process, and actually, when this was started in October, we did not know our rural aid allocation yet. So what I like to do with funds that we don't feel 100% secure about is add them back in to start and then we can back off. So it's not quite the same amount, you'll see as we go through the process, but it will help bring down the 11%.
Can you remind me what the percentage increase ask we had for this current budget season was over the year?
Yeah, let me just look it up really quick. The other thing with rural aid, and right now we are feeling pretty secure about it, but there was talks at the state level, early fall, about revenue decline and 9C cuts. And rural aid would be one of the things along with regional transportation and circuit breaker that could get cut. So while we're talking about, yes, let's potentially use our rural aid, there's still six months of the fiscal year to get through from the state. And there doesn't seem to be concern right now, so I certainly don't wanna alarm anyone. But it's not a fund that we should really get in a habit of relying on a specific amount. If it comes through, it comes through. Let's see. Henry, what was your question here? We were at 5.57 over FY24.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So the next adjustment that I made involved early childhood revolving account. If you'll recall from our conversations in the past, we have seen a decline over the last several years in tuition coming in. And that is not because our, our early childhood program is not full. It is because we've seen an increase in special needs, which is great that we can service those students at the youngest age to hopefully catch some of those things moving forward. But it also means that we're not having as many families actually paying tuition for students to be enrolled in the program. So that was roughly another 2% adjustment. I basically moved an IA off so that we could maintain some revolving fund balance. I'm anticipating that it'll be minimal moving into the next year, like maybe $15,000, which isn't a lot of money if we have an emergency come up for particularly special education, early childhood needs.
And we don't know what next year's early childhood looks like at this point?
Unless you have info from him.
We always end up full. It's just that the piece we don't know about is how many students would be paying tuition and...
Who has needs and who doesn't? Do you know how many places you need to fill in that? Like who's moving on to kindergarten and how many we'll have open?
There are, we have a record number of preschoolers moving up. There are 12 kids moving from preschool up to...
So that, depending on needs, that could help a little bit.
Yep.
It's also great to have that many kids who went to preschool here and now they're stepping into kindergarten.
That's awesome.
And we'll have fewer students who haven't had school experience yet. So it's...
Hopeful.
Yeah.
As, as soon as we have some rough enrollment numbers, which we should have in February, because I believe enrollment is already open, I think I saw that on our website.
I saw it in the map, yeah.
So as soon as we have info, you know, we'll take that into consideration. It might be able to help us if we did have all those slots filled with paying families. So another significant expense, and again, this is repeat from prior years. We have retirement expense, which is a sick buyback, which is contractual based on the teacher contract. We are anticipating almost a $60,000 sick buyback next year.
One percent.
I believe it's two. Yeah. $60,000, we're looking at, you know, roughly almost another 2, 4, 6% right there. So all of these pieces are outside of our control at this point. And I, I think it's important for us to recognize that we're starting off the year in such a significantly difficult place before we even get to the actual expenses of the school.
And the sick buyback has to be done in one year?
Yes. There's nothing in the contract that says, you know, employees can defer or if we can't afford it budgetarily, that people will be put into another fiscal year. It says that they're paid out in the next fiscal year if they let us know by a certain date.
There's a date, I remember.
It's usually early October. Yeah. And these are actually, I think one of them was a retiree from last year that came in late in the year, if I remember right.
She did not submit her paperwork by October 1st. So she had to wait until next.
And then the second one is someone who's retiring at the end of this year, who did get their paperwork.
Can we find, do we know who that is on camera or do we? I'm just asking.
I think so, I think so acknowledged.
I mean, it must be if they, they're gonna retire.
Pauline Park.
Oh, really? Aw. Tough shoes to fill.
Okay. So with that said, moving on to regular budget expenses. We do have a COLA increase in for all employees, school-based, central office, custodians, cafeteria workers. And then we also have a placeholder in for negotiations. So we are negotiating currently the teacher and IA contracts. We have a number in there that Darius and I hope will be agreeable to both sides. I don't, I don't wanna disclose what that is at this point, but we do have a figure in there. So that's been accounted for. I did make a wage adjustment for the retiree that we're anticipating this year. It was a veteran teacher, so we think we'll be able to bring someone in at a lower amount. And we saved about $20,000 there based on what we currently have budgeted. The other difficult part is always when enrollment goes up, it impacts our cost share percentage for central office. So Waitley did have a little bump in enrollment, whether it was here or at Frontier, and that is impacting the cost share. So we're about a half a percent up in the cost share for expenses that we split five ways between all five schools and then almost a full percent for things that are just split at the elementary level. So that would be like the curriculum director, the early childhood director, and expenses related to them. So that does have a pretty big impact when you're talking about a percent and a half in the cost share calculation. Other expenses are minor increases. I had to increase the transportation based on the contract for COLA. We're now paying for water and sewer, which we have not paid in the past, so that's been added into the budget. And then we increased some IT expenses based on contractual agreements for software that we use. So that was about an $8,000 increase, not really significant. If we did not have all of those other factors that we previously discussed, the budget would be in really good shape if we were just looking at COLA and then these minor expenses.
Why are we not paying water and sewer?
Um, I would have to pull up the email for the exact details and I do have it. I just don't remember off the top of my head exactly what happened, but there was some agreement at some point between the town and the school that we were not paying a water and sewer.
So we've never paid water?
Not in my time here at least.
And somebody from the town realized it and now we're paying, like what happened? I can't imagine it's a huge...
It's about $2,500.
Well, it's just water, right?
I think there's probably, there may be some rate on there for... I'd have to look at the actual...
Oh, the sewer, we pumped the sewer.
We have septic...
We have septic system. And that comes out of the maintenance budget that we pay for? I'm just asking.
We just had them here last week.
So this $2,500 is just water? The sewer's already in there, or the septic's already in?
That'd be a good question to ask somebody.
So like, we definitely did talk about it. I don't have it in an email. I have...
I remember what happened at Frontier.
So from Dan Dennehy, it went to Wayne, Water Commissioner email. Paul Antea and the Charger Collector Amy Schrader. So it says, "As I recall, the water department plan was for the elementary school to receive water usage bills this year for the first time since it was built." It does not explain why, though. The school's finalizing the budget, blah, 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 blah. And then Wayne responded back that he would guess between $2,000 and $2,500.
So we have a, we must have a water meter out here somewhere that they can read then, right?
Sure.
They must, yeah.
I have no idea.
So I can definitely try to find out more information and, you know, if you know anyone in the town that maybe might have more information as to why.
Absolutely.
Apparently, they granted us free water for 35 years. This stuff's, this, next year will be 35 years for the school. So some sort of like... I could give you a start.
Just, I don't, wrapping my head around that whole thing.
Yeah.
Are you sure the IT function?
So there are software agreements that we have for some of the things that we use in support of curriculum, as well as, like, it could be Power School, it could be School Spring.
Is it School Spring?
No. Parent Square. Parent Square.
The charges from these companies.
Exactly. So there's been inflation factors. Every year, the rates go up and Scott Paul is recommending that we adjust the budgets to meet contractual agreements.
Do you know roughly how much?
Um, it was of the $8,000 to four, maybe $3,000. So the only, only thing I wanna comment on in level services is that the level service budget does include the .5 full-time equivalent math interventionist that we added last school year that we talked about being a one-year position. We kept it in because we wanna have that conversation as part of our budget process. So that is in there currently. I wanna say it's about a $38,000, maybe $36,000 or $38,000 salary. So almost another 2%, you know, 1.75 probably, and that person's working out long. Okay, so that is the gist of level services. Any other questions before we move on to principals' request? Okay. So the only thing from Chrissy requested this year is the need to add two additional IAs, and that is to cover anticipated student needs based on IEPs. That will probably cost us about $66,000, which is slightly over 3%. So when we take in level services and those principal office requests, our total budget first draft is 14.28% over fiscal year '25.
Do you hear that, Henry, all right?
Oh, with the two IAs requesting, it goes from 11 to 14?
Yep.
Can I ask, is this, is one of those IAs gonna be for the new student coming in?
They're both for anticipated students.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, and we, we need them.
At this time, I don't know how to say that. At this time, it's unclear what the program will be. It could be five days full-time, it could be less.
We're trying to keep it in-house, correct? With the extra IA, I mean, the IAs are here for the services that they need, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Those would be an extra IA in these classrooms?
Individuals.
It'd be two. Yeah, they'd be one-to-ones based on student IEPs.
Okay.
All right, so let's talk about this last piece here in the report. So you asked about the rural aid allocation. You can see on the bottom of this sheet, currently, the rural aid allocation is $35,076. The state did make a mistake in the rural aid allocation. They excluded some schools in the original calculation. So a month later, and I think I had already drafted this report, they sent us an updated amount, and I think Waitley went down about $2,000. And I did not update this sheet, so that's on me. So we might be somewhere around $33,000. But you can see we, what we dropped, we went from 40 to 33. The reason for that is that they have a formula based on density, your population and your student population, and they must not be considering us as dense where we fall in the calculation compared to everyone else in the state. If we did apply that to the budget, if we had no other unforeseen expenses come up this year, the budget's in really good shape as it stands, you know, we have no, you know, surprise special ed needs, then we could use those funds to offset, which would bring our number down by 1.7%. So just under two. The next thing for us to consider is that we could request that the town help us pay the sick buyback expense out of, outside of the budget, so on a separate warrant article, or if they have free cash available from this year, or if they had other means in the past. They have paid for retirement benefits for us.
Either it was last year, year before, they paid for one out of the special mon, some of the money.
Part of the money, yeah. So if we pull that $58,000 off, that would drop us another 2.82%. I did wanna point out that we have had retirement benefit payouts in four of the last five budget cycles. And the reason I wanna point that out is that it might be a conversation that we wanna have with the town about putting a placeholder, you know, inflating our budget a little bit more. And I can look ahead to see where our staff is as far as longevity within the district and see if we think we have any upcoming retirements. But when you have people year after year after year after year, it makes sense to have it be part of your budget so that you're not always trying to find extra funds. My understanding from a message that we received from the town administrator is that Waitley does not have a significant amount of new revenue growth this year. So it's gonna limit what they have to go towards extra things when they certify free cash and figure out their budget. So I'm not sure what position they're gonna be in. So either we're looking at asking for it in another way or we're talking about putting some portion of it on budget. Either way, we're gonna be asking that town to cover the 2.82%. It's not like we're taking it out and it's going away. It still has to be paid, so... So just a comment here, there's little room for additional reductions at the level service budget outside of the above-mentioned options. And even with those changes, level services will likely be around six-ish, if not a little bit higher percent increase if we were to add rural aid and pull off the sick buyback. So we're still at a number that's pretty high. And we might have to talk about how it would be creative. So what I mentioned in the next line is, we talked about the need for those two new IA positions to cover anticipated student needs. Those would be one-to-ones. Right now, the students aren't even enrolled yet. So we're, we anticipate they're coming, but it might be a conversation that we have to have outside of budget season, pull out those two IAs and then find ways to fund them later. Or having to be creative, which would mean, you know, Chrissy has to do some magic and...
During COVID, you were in the classroom all the time. I'm not asking you to be in the classroom.
It would, it would impact IAs in the classrooms, yeah.
But that's definitely something that we're gonna have to consider because, you know, $66,000 is over 3%. We, we cannot present a 14% budget increase to the town. Even 11% is, is way too high. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is that I... Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to mention is that I am watching the school choice funds really closely. Our expenses do currently exceed our revenue. I hope that this is not a new message and this is district-wide. Um, we're seeing this across the board that we've relied on um school choice a little bit too much. I didn't make any adjustments for the current year. Um, but we're going to need to think about that as we go through the budget cycle.
In terms of that, and this is jumping the gun a little bit, but um. Typically, my goal is to be sure that however many sixth graders leave us, that is how many kindergarteners, school choice-wise, join us. And I will not have the ability to do that this year because it's, so every year in a row, we have a high number of Wheatley resident kids coming of age to be eligible for kindergarten this year. So we have very few school choice slots. So this is not a great year to also be losing some revenue that way.
Absolutely.
That'd be interesting thing. How many parents in the four towns, when they decide to send their kid to kindergarten or preschool or whatever, it, it starts off there, but if they start up at another school and they want to bring their kids over here for first grade or something like that, it, it might be, you know, long, pretty long before they can get in if there's no slots or filling them all with.
If it's, if it's school choice.
Yeah, yeah.
If a student goes to another school, if they're Wheatley resident, it doesn't matter who you have in the class, but Wheatley resident gets, gets registered wherever, wherever they choose.
Oh, yeah.
Um. Yeah, I wish I had a lot more room.
Well, I heard what Darius said last night at the frontier meeting about it's first, unless I've heard it before, but the first time I've heard it where the kid that's in one of our four elementary schools is not guaranteed to go over to frontier, that was, that blew me last night because I mean, I, it's probably been in the works, so it's been a while, but that's the first time I heard about it. Like, I always remember, hey, once you get in one elementary school, you're guaranteed to get in a high school. But that's the that's the policy.
Well, it's at the state level.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not, it's not our policy. It has to be a lottery.
Come down to, has it come to a lottery?
Um, George turned some seventh graders away. I don't know that they were, I don't know where they were live, but we definitely capped the seventh grade class.
Oh, eighth graders. There was no room in eighth grade, right? And they say last night.
I think that's what he said last night.
Eighth grade was no room for school choice, so.
Which is really difficult decision to make because come ninth grade, we lose a good chunk of kids that we turned, you know, we turned away seventh and eighth graders and then the class size drops again in ninth grade. So it's, you almost wish you could. But exactly, but you can only have so many sections for the middle school, you know, we only have so much face, we only have so much teachers and you don't want your class size is too big. So.
That should be a negotiation.
Yeah. Um, so that is all that I have for today. What I do want to say is that, you know, the numbers on here, like, these are actual budget numbers. This is not, we've asked for the moon and we're presenting a fourteen percent budget. We've, we have a budget based on needs of the school and we have other outside factors, grant adjustments revolving fund adjustments, retirement expenses. We do not have control of those pieces. So um, we are going to have some work to do and we're going to have to be creative in how we bring things down. Uh, and hope that if we are at six percent, it is palatable to the town, which is really not ideal. I know that. So.
Can I ask, as far as we know, there's no planned renegotiation.
But we can barely hear him.
Oh, hold on, Henry, we can't really hear you.
That's a first. No one's ever said that to me.
Smiling.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll play it.
No, we got you now.
Yeah, all right. I just wanted to, as far as you know, there's no planned renegotiation of the busing contract. I remember that was such a wallop that we took when that happened, but it's, it's, is it locked in for a few years or is it?
Five-year contract.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
You have, you have any other early questions at all?
I have to take you.
My comment is whoever decided on the sick buyback thing, out of their mind.
Well, we changed that.
I, 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 I'm, I'm one of the ones that was there when the Lexi, when we had the Lexi, is this part of the Lexington plan still, these, these two people or this regular buyback at one day for every year of service? You know what this?
Yes, it's, um, no, it's two days for every year of service.
Oh, is that the high school that we went to?
The high school has a different, yeah, there's some different things. Like if you elect longevity at the high school,
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some different things. Um, and I'm sorry, Lisa and Jody, if I'm getting that wrong because sometimes it's confusing. Um. But we changed the sick buyback, so they still get it in the contract for new hires, but it's not at the same level.
People are grandfathered, some of them.
Right, we sell people.
And it'll take
It'll be a while.
A long time before.
Except when you're in a small school like this and we had one last year, we got two this year. I mean.
I think it's hurting all the schools.
Yeah.
At some point or another.
Yep. So the next steps for us will be, uh, Darius, Chrissy and I will go back to the drawing board and sort of see what we can do. Uh, we'll apply the rural aid and hope, fingers crossed, that nothing changes with that before um, budget is finalized or even before the end of the year after it's finalized. And then we'll have to talk about, you know, how we handle the new requests for new staffing and see what other options we have. I will continue to look at revolving funds to see if there's anything we can do there. Um, and then we'll come back hopefully with a reduced number in February. I think Wheatley's town meeting is usually in May, right? I'm not sure if they have the date set, but we have some time. Technically, our public hearing is in March and our goal is to be done by the end of March, but if we need more time, we can take more time.
Meet with them before that?
I'm sure we'll have a request, especially.
We haven't, we haven't got any H, yeah, or anything like that.
No, and one of the things that I'm looking at is um I had Mike DeBarge is, who's our assistant business manager. I had him run some data for me so that we could look at a three-year comparison of um budget versus actual to see if any of our expense accounts can be scrunched down. You know, we don't want to get so close that we don't have a buffer, but if you know, electricity has been underspent by eight thousand dollars for five years, then let's reduce electricity by three or four thousand so that we have less of a cushion. So we are going to prepare those documents because I'm sure the town's going to want to see greater detail. Um, you know.
There's some lines we can't predict. I mean, if we have a good year building repair-wise, then there could be some funds left over there, but you don't know that until we hit the end of the fiscal year.
Well, and I think this building is starting to see some needs for deferred maintenance that our budget, even if, even if you had no unforeseen repairs, like the roof itself is something that.
That's, that's another story.
Another topic, but yeah. And like substitute coverage, you know, some years we don't have as many subs in the building and other years we do. So sometimes there's money left there, but um, anything that we can concretely try to reduce, we will certainly do that. We're going to have to at this point. So.
Thanks.
More to come.
Okay, um, I got nothing. Collaborative, I heard they were just talking about money. Oh, oh, Henry.
Yeah, sorry, I had to close my door.
That's right, collaborative?
Um, they continue to be the largest educational collaborative in the states. Uh, they released their annual report and it was a challenging year, but they met their goals. The juiciest tidbit um from the last meeting is the money that was stolen is in the process of being recovered. So that is exciting for them.
Thank you.
That's about it.
Thank you. Um, superintendent, uh, we're going to be going into executive session and we're not, we're not going to come back into regular session, correct? So you could stay on. Everybody else?
Yeah, Henry can stay, everyone else.
There was, there was something in here about a student that I can dare, so Sally can read.
Oh, on the superintendent's report, Sasha?
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Um. This is his words, "It is with great pride and admiration to present the French New Regional School District's twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award. An extraordinary senior who truly has impressed excellence in academic leadership and character, Sasha Mallow." She not a Wheatley, I don't think she's a Wheatley kid, but.
She didn't, she was supposed to come last night toward meeting. I'm not sure what happened, but she didn't show up with her parents usually, you know, presentation and stuff. Julie had her her thing back in December, I think, at the superintendent's meeting or, and uh, but. Good for her. Okay, Andrew, you could stay. Lisa, Jody and Sally. See you guys later.
Okay.